I'd like to call this meeting to order as Wilmington School District's board. It is six oh nine, based on the box. If we could stand for the pledge allegiance in moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Mrs. Cole.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Oak.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Mrs. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Shanker's accent. Dr. Matty.
Here.
Mr. Bonner.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
All right, we have a presentation this evening from the Ron Dunn Agency. I'd like to welcome them again, and you have the floor.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello, how we doing?
Doing well.
Good.
Good, good. First off, I apologize, sometimes when I get a little nervous, my voice gets somewhat loud. So if it does, just look at me and let me know, I'll calm it down. My name's Bill Diamond, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you all. It's been my pleasure to work with Wilmington School District and put this proposal together, which I think we've done a really great thing. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce a few people. I have Chris Richards with me, he works in our office, he's been with us for about six years. He is very integral in gathering data and helping us through the renewal and quoting process. We have Jenna Cole, she's been with me for 20 years, I actually hired her right out of high school, and she's been with me ever since, and she's our commercial lines manager, and has been very involved in the actual quoting and everything of your program. And then we have Mike Centroni, and he is with Utica Insurance, and he's going to give a little bit of information on the program and how it works. So anyways, a little bit about me and our agency. I live in Cranberry Township, I'm the father of three. I have a 22-year-old, a 20-year-old, and an 18-year-old, all of which have either gone to Duquesne or in Duquesne University right now. They graduated from Seneca Valley School District. I'm a single father, I lost my wife a couple of years ago to cancer, and we're making the best out of it with that, but my kids have done very, very well for themselves, I'm very proud of them. I grew up in Cranberry, so I've seen kind of like growing up in a district very similar to yours when I was a kid, and it being semi-rural and what it is now. And it's just, it's kind of crazy, a couple of farms I worked on are now housing developments, and it's pretty wild to see just what's all occurred in the last 40 years there. So that's a little bit about who I am personally. From a business standpoint, I'd like to just kind of explain a little bit who the Ron Dunn Insurance Group is. You know, I went to Teal College, graduated 30 years ago, and came on board with the Ron Dunn Agency. At that time, it was just he, myself, and a part-time CSR. We have since grown the agency to about 20 employees with four locations and the better part of $30 million in annualized premium. So I'm very proud of the operation that we have and the staff that we have, and frankly, it is truly our staff that make us great, and I think that it's what separates us from the others. We just celebrated our 40th anniversary at the agency this year, and like I said, you know, we have four different locations all around Western Pennsylvania. And the thing is that I would say, we have divisions of personal lines, commercial lines, all, you know, just like any other agency may have. But I think where we really specialize is in the fact that we deal in very hard-to-place, complicated risks. And what I mean by that is, is that, you know, it's not uncommon for us to have an account that's well, you know, well over a half million dollars with maybe five or six carriers involved, and it takes a lot of moving parts to make them work. And I think that's what's been very great for, you know, we have the staff and expertise to do that. You know, our staff has well over 200 years of combined experience, and we use that on a daily basis to, you know, help our clients get the best possible product and service we can offer. You know, as we kind of, you know, talking about the school district insurance, you know, we are very active in this marketplace. And, you know, there's the PSBA, which is now CM Regent, there's Utica Insurance, and there's Liberty Mutual. Those are pretty much the three major players in this marketplace. We happen to have them all. And frankly, we have, you know, multiple districts all with different, you know, we don't just sell one carrier. We have all three of those carriers used with our districts we insure. What I'd say about that is, is the key, and I think that's where the separation comes in, just because, you know, one carrier is good at one point in time does not mean the next year that it's just a set-it-and-forget-it scenario. You have to be very, very much on top of what's going on in this marketplace, because there are new coverages coming up all the time that have to be addressed. And there's frankly, you know, one carrier may be in favor one year, and the next year there's another one that's really, really looking for business, and they're very competitive. We look at it as, okay, we stick with the best carriers. Like, for example, Utica has, let me go to that information, they have... Where did I put it here? Better than $22 million in premium in Pennsylvania. 100 schools and $9.1 million in premium just in Western Pennsylvania. So it's a fact that they are very, very much involved in the school insurances here in Western PA. So I wanted to let you know, the carrier that you chose is a very, very good carrier, and there's no question in that, and I think you can rest assured that, you know, you've got a good carrier on your side. And in fact, when Mike gets up to speak, you'll see all the additional things that they do offer above and beyond some of the other ones. So I think that there are some positive, major positives to going with them. You know, I think I had said, you know, we're not a set-it-and-forget-it agency. The one thing I will tell you about what we've promised to do is that we will have a dialogue with the administration and the board, if need be, at any point in time to make sure that we are all on the same page with what's happening. We have quarterly reviews where we talk, we'll talk with Josh to make sure that, you know, what's happening in the insurance market, what's happening with your district are things that we are on the same page about. On top of that, you know, we like to get way up in front of our renewals. And what I mean by that is, is that, you know, we're starting on them 120 days in advance. And the reason we do that is, is because if we start to find out we're getting maybe some pricing issues, maybe there's a claim issue, maybe there's one thing or another, we have the time to react and have other options for you should the one you have not be the best one in the marketplace. And that's, you know, I know that insurance is an intangible object, but those are some of the things that I would like to say are tangible, that we, the promise we are going to make and the things that we are going to do to see that, you know, your district gets those types of services along the way. You know, in the end, I think where I would leave this is, is I want you to know that we are a proactive agency. You know, everything we do is with being proactive, and I think you'll find out along the way. And I just want you to know that we greatly appreciate the business and that we will do everything we can to earn your trust, and we're thankful, very thankful. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Jenna Cole. She's going to talk a little bit about our processes, and we can take it from there. In the meantime, I'm going to hand out just a little flyer that we have about who we are, and I just can give you some insight on our agency.
While Bill's doing that, I'll go ahead and start my spiel, which he stole pretty much my whole first paragraph. I will reread it and bore you with it, but just, I have a lot of thoughts, so I wrote them down just so that I could be as clear and concise and quickly not waste as much time as possible, so forgive me if I'm doing a lot of reading. But as Bill mentioned, I'm Jenna Cole, I've been with him for 20 years, I've been with the Ron Dunn Agency for 20 years. I feel like something very special, not only in employment in general, but especially in an industry with so much turnover. It's a great company to work for, we have values, so to speak. You know, we have our own mission that is all based on personalized service, especially in an age that's so digital and so impersonal, and that is not how we operate. So that's something that we take pride in, I personally take pride in that. I helped Bill develop all of the processes that we follow, that I will get into now, just to give you a little history about how we got involved with your district, and then the process we went through to arrive at the Utica policy that we have provided you with. So the process starts with understanding a risk and building a relationship, because as in any relationship in life, the most solid foundation is trust. We had the pleasure of being introduced to Josh through a mutual colleague three years ago, and we had several meetings with him, we came out, we walked the grounds, we looked at your insurance program. But it was decided at the time that everything is good. You had an agent that was very attentive to your needs, you had a program that fit the political climate and the social climate at the time, so there was nothing more for us to do. However, we kept in touch with Josh, as is our standard practice. We reach out to all of our clients, all of our prospective clients, just to make sure that there are no pain points or anything occurring. And it just so happened that this year, it was our understanding that the former agent had retired, the account was a little bit orphaned, and it was basically a disservice to the district to not put it out to bid, not only for coverage and pricing, but for an agent that could meet your specific needs. So we started a very long process, Mr. Latour, Chris, Bill, me, hours, right, of compiling data, application after application, pulling your current policies, looking at the CM Regent memorandum of coverage, kind of trying to piece together what you had, because what was provided to Mr. Latour wasn't exactly all-inclusive. But luckily, we also represent CM Regent, so I'm very familiar with their coverage forms, I'm very familiar with their enhancements, so I was able to fill in the gaps to offer a true apples-to-apples comparison with what you previously had. So, and a lot of the things that we did, not only did we, you know, fill out applications, but we reviewed a lot of the district's current policies, we reviewed your handbooks, and the excessive force procedure, we've, like I said, we walked the campus, we inspected buildings, we inspected property, we had multiple conversations about what goes off campus, what stays on campus, what values are, what payrolls are, to really try and understand where your risks are. So after we compiled hours and hours of data and pages and pages of fun stuff, we made submissions to our carriers that we felt would best fit the needs of the district. As Bill mentioned, we have several, but in this instance, it was Liberty Mutual and Utica. So we had multiple back-and-forths with our underwriters, who both of which have been in the industry for many years. And the school district pool of insurance in Western PA is pretty shallow, right, as we had mentioned. So they're very familiar with CM Regent, very familiar with the PSBA, very familiar with the coverages that they offer. So that was an asset as well, that we were able to use all of our combined experience to accurately review and compare the different coverage options. So after a thorough review, Liberty Mutual came back and said, listen, we can match these coverages for you, but we can't get near the pricing. And half of the purpose of this was not only to make sure you're adequately protected, but to save some money, right? I mean, that's money that can be reinvested back into the faculty, back into the students, back into the district. So we decided to not even proceed with that, because it wasn't in your best interest. So then Utica came forth with their formal proposal. Pricing looked good, coverage looked good. After that, we had multiple back-and-forths with the underwriters. I met with Mr. Centroni, who I will introduce in a moment. I met with the other representatives. Because part of my job is, any carrier that we take on as an agency, I interview them personally. I ask about their products, I ask about their history, I ask about who they insure. We don't take on carriers just to take them on. We take on carriers that are reputable, that have strong, solid products. So I, I'm not sure where I was coming with that, but anyway. So Utica was a good choice, I had researched them well. Same with Liberty Mutual, same with all of the carrier options that we offer. So after we got their quotation, and we spent a lot of back-and-forth time reviewing it, going back and forth with underwriting, make sure everything is comparable, we put together a 37-page proposal, our own proposal, rather than just throwing out the quotes, right, that are kind of hard to understand sometimes, real wordy, like numbers are in a bunch of places. So we take the time to put together a proposal that is easy to understand, that outlines numbers, outlines coverage. And not only do we do this when we present, we do this for you every year. So not only is it easy for you to understand and follow and look something up when you have to, but it's just an extra check and balance to make sure that year over year over year you are adequately protected, nothing was removed, and we can line items and go over everything. Did you add any band equipment last year? Did you put up another concession stand last year? Did you add another vehicle? So it really gives us a very focused and streamlined opportunity to make sure that we are still ensuring the district adequately. So after we presented this proposal, I believe Josh discussed it with you as a board, and there were some questions, which we did answer. We actually, and this is our standard practice, we answered the questions as an addendum to our proposal, so it can be included, so that everything is clear and concise in one place. And then after that, I believe the board had concurred that it was an adequate suitable program, and we had placed coverage. So in the end, Utica was providing a substantial upfront savings to the district. It was about $13,000 with the potential of up to a 15% dividend, which would equate to about another $8,000 for very comparable coverage. And in fact, there were some coverages that actually, in today's climate, are very important, that go above and beyond what was previously carried. One of those coverages, for example, is called employment practices liability coverage, okay? So that's if any employee, you know, would bring a discrimination suit, a harassment suit, something of that nature. Previously, that was included in the school leaders' legal for defense costs only and only employees. Ours opens up for third parties. So when you have volunteers coming in to help with classroom events, when you have your food vendors coming in, when you have workers coming on campus, should they bring a suit against the district, there is no coverage. And there is not only coverage for defense, but there's coverage for judgments as well. And it does not eat into your school leader's legal limit. So these are really important things that, again, in today's climates, and unfortunately, the lawsuit-happy nature of it all, that are really of benefit to a school district, and in particular, your district. Plus, Utica offers so many value-added services that the district is likely paying for right now, and it comes free or at a very reduced cost. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Centroni to elaborate on those value-added services.
Ask a question first.
Yes, of course.
Mr. Diamond.
Yes.
Could you help us out a little bit with the concept of what a broker is versus an agent? And you have a brokerage, you're like a broker.
Yeah, well, a broker, in this scenario, we are directly appointed with Utica Insurance, okay? Which means, they have, we have a direct contract with them where we work directly with an underwriter, there's no third party involved. With a brokerage, we would actually have to go to a broker, that broker would then contract with the insurance carrier, and there's like, there's now three people involved in this scenario. That is not, in this case here, we are directly appointed with Utica, as well as with CM Regent, as well as with Liberty Mutual. So we're directly appointed with them, and we do not have to work in any brokerage arrangement with, you know, a third-party brokerage.
But you're not particularly agents for these companies here?
Oh, yeah, the ones that are listed, we are directly appointed with.
Directly.
Every one of them, yeah. We are an independent agency and represent, and that's not, that's just a list of maybe the major ones. There's probably another 20 that we don't, we didn't have room to put on that page, that we are directly appointed with, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Going to pass around a marketing pamphlet that goes over some of the things I'm going to talk about. My name's Mike Centroni, Utica National Insurance. I'm going to give you a quick little bit of the background on myself and how it all ties into our company philosophy, what we do for you, and why it all makes sense and jives together. I've been in insurance for 27 years. Beginning of my career was on the claims, and that's where I cut my teeth. I handled, supervised, or managed just about every type of school claim out there. Every type of school claim out there, you can all imagine what those are. Claims is a brutal animal, and you can only do it for so long in your career, and I wanted to go the opposite way. So about 12 years ago, I made the switch to risk management, and that's the health and safety piece of the company. And we work directly with the customers, not only to get information, but to help prevent the losses, to get you to a better place. And that prevention led to what has become our philosophy in the school unit, prevention and defense. Now, I worked specifically in the past with risk management. I was Western New York, right? I had 100 school districts in my territory that I would visit once, twice, maybe up to four times a year, safety committee meetings on top of that. And then, because of the nature of the job, I would have to leave a school and maybe go to a machine shop, or a doctor's office, or a supermarket. I now work specifically for the school unit of the company. I don't do anything else but schools, and the majority of what I do is oversee the value-added services that we provide to our schools. And that goal, as I mentioned, is prevention and defense. We do all these things to help prevent the losses. We want to stop that slip and trip and fall, whatever those things, whatever it's going to be. But knowing that we're not going to prevent every type of, not there in all the losses, defense becomes the secondary piece. What can we, what can you do now? What can we help you do now? That we can point to later to show, this is the evidence of the good faith effort that the school had made to try to prevent this. When you look at the claims and the lawsuits, a big piece of, what goes into that is liability. There's liability on the district, and that's where a judgment will come from. But one of the pieces to liability is negligence. The more we can show that you weren't negligent, the less chance there's going to be liability on the district. And how do we do that? It's through a number of different services. The first one I want to talk about is vector solutions. It used to be called safe schools. From what I understand, it's a service that the district is already using and paying for. We provide that to all of our schools at no additional charge. In addition to the safety and compliance courses, the 225-plus safety and compliance courses, we also paid extra to provide the child abuse prevention course fundal to our schools at no additional charge, because that's a topic that we feel strongly about. The purpose behind all this, the training, is the prevention. Hopefully, that staff member is going to learn the lesson of the training. They're going to pick that thing up, they're not going to send that text message, they're not going to do whatever that thing was. But the fact that the school has recognized the exposures and is providing training about it is going to help, and that's why we provide this at no additional charge. Safe schools, just to go one step further with it, in addition to all the training courses, now I still call it safe schools, vector solutions, they just rebranded. For 12 years, I've been calling them safe schools. And one of the other benefits is that the policy piece. When we talk about negligence as the policy, the schools have to have a policy that you're not allowed to do such things, and that's where the rules come from. But one thing to have a policy, but do you provide that policy? Does the staff member know about that policy? Can you verify that they know and acknowledge? What vector allows you to do is upload your policies, the paper documents, and then assign them out as a course, so that the staff member gets it. They open up the window, there's the PDF with all those forms. You can only force them to do so much, but as soon as they close that window, check here with the knowledge that you've received, reviewed, and understood these policies, hit submit, and now we've got a paperless recording that they received these policies, they understood them, and that'll be saved forever and ever. So we go one step past that, and now we have a policy, we've provided that policy, we've got their verification, they understand that policy. Now we're going to provide specific training, sexual harassment, for instance. We're going to provide, we're going to assign out the sexual harassment course for the staff members. Now we're building up our not only prevention, but our defense. The staff member knows there's a policy against this, they've acknowledged that they're aware of it, we've provided them specific training on why this isn't acceptable. Maybe they're not going to do that, they may. But if they do, the district has a defense. The district recognized the exposure, was doing something about it, and we're going to reduce your negligence that way. Another piece to prevention and defense is impact testing. Cognitive baseline and post-injury testing for concussions. We provide both baseline and post-injury tests to our schools at no additional charge. We've already made this purchase of huge bulk tests. We're not going to stop doing it, this isn't a program that's going to go away anytime soon. We do this for two reasons, prevention and defense. The baseline, for anyone that's unfamiliar, baseline is something that they do before the season begins. It's all cognitive computerized testing, memory, speed of response. It's not an intelligence exam, it's things of that, like I said. They take that before the season starts. In the event of a head injury, there's the post-injury test, which is very similar to the baseline, but now taken with a head injury. And now you compare those, the doctor, the nurse, they can compare these results one to the other to gauge where that student is, their return to play and their return to learn. Return to play is always the big thing that we talk about, but a student with a head injury, a brain injury, is going to have to go through protocols for return to learn. They're not going to jump back into that classroom the day after a concussion. So we take all those things into consideration. So the post-injury test compared to the baseline may recognize that a student isn't ready to get back onto that field, and we're going to prevent them from going back out. Typically, concussion liability comes from how the concussion is handled. It's usually the second incident where it goes wrong. No one expects you to prevent concussions entirely. It's how that concussion is handled afterwards, and when that kid goes back into the game, that's when you'll be second-guessed. So it's what we can do before that student goes back into the game. So that's why, again, no additional charge for these. But in the event, something happens, and that student is allowed to return, and they are incurred, they get another injury, and a lawsuit or claim is brought, we've got prevention, but we've got defense. The district is doing something about it. We've got our coaches trained, we're doing impact testing. We weren't negligent, we recognized the exposure, and we were doing something about it to try and prevent this from happening. On the school safety side, we make a number of different elements available to our schools at no additional charge as well. Threat assessment software. Schools are required to have a threat assessment team, and often, no training is given for that. We provide you with a computerized software that's going to walk you through the questions, and then not only provide that, and then save that documentation, but it'll give you a threat level at the end, and some direction that you should take or could take towards resolving this matter. Prevention and defense. We're going to recognize the exposure, we're going to recognize the threat, and we're going to take action before it becomes an active shooter or other situation. But again, now we've got a defense. We've got the computerized tested, the software that was used, we've got evidence to show why the district did what it did. There's also bullying, a threat assessment software, very similar to that, but I won't bore you to death with it. Those are just a few of the things I wanted to touch on, but training is the key, staff training or otherwise. As you heard, we are not new to Pennsylvania, to Western Pennsylvania, or this area specifically. In the past few years, just to give you an idea, and one of the other functions of my job is I host webinars and seminars, I write risk management alerts and other things, but just in the past few years, in February of 19, I held seminars in Green Tree and Cranberry with the Secret Service when the National Threat Assessment Center put out their school safety guides. In October of 19, I was in Cranberry and Erie hosting Act 44 seminar trainings for your SROs and administrators. In February of 20, I was back in Cranberry for a school safety symposium. In that particular case, the regional learning alliance, the RLA, the center, they were trying to hold their own, and they were charging $50,000 a piece for registration, and eventually had to cancel because of low registration numbers. So we came in and did it at no charge for anybody, and opened it up to the public. Beyond that, I was supposed to do another threat, I threw this name out because they were willing to host it. Plum Borough was so taken by the threat assessment seminar that we Plum Borough was so taken by the threat assessment seminar that we held that they wanted to host a seminar that we could open to the public. And that was going to be in April of twenty twenty, but as you can imagine, that didn't work then. But it is on hold, we have every intention of coming back once these in-person events can get back to it. The last thing I want to leave you with is just our overall risk management, that job that I used to do. We have boots-on-the-ground people that work here in the area that are going to work directly with you. I'm that guy, I'm the home office specialist. When our boots-on-the-ground has a question, they call me, that's where I come in. But they're going to, in the past, in my past, when I first started on the job, it used to be the Hector inspector role. We'd walk through and look for your fire extinguisher inspections and door wedges and things of that nature. But that's not the focus anymore. What we do now is come in on specific topics to work with you to make them safer. Whether it's going to be athletics, where we talk about not only the concussion piece, but another that ties in with Title IX is texting between staff members and students. I throw this out there, how many of your staff members are currently texting students? Are there any controls on it? Do you know how many, who, who they're texting, when, why? Do we tell them what they're allowed to do? We'll help you with that. Outside use of facilities, we'll help them go over the forms, all those types of things. Or whatever it is you need. As we come and schedule that visit, we're going to ask you. What are the topics that you want to hear about? What are the topics you want us to address? If we see it in the claims, whether here or elsewhere, we're going to say, alright, we're seeing a lot of this type of loss, let's make sure it doesn't happen at your school. Again, just a quick overview of some of the things that we do. I'll throw my card around so that anybody can get in touch with me afterwards. Any questions before I yield? Thank you for your time.
All done?
Yeah.
That's our presentation. And again, I'd like to thank you all very much for giving us this opportunity and we certainly appreciate the business. Thank you again.
I have one general question for Charles, I think. Knowing not very much about insurance, how do you know how much to insure for, what amount to insure for, in a particular part of the contract?
Well, I mean, there's multiple parts to the contract. You know, we're talking property, okay, the physical assets.
That would be an example, right?
Okay. You know, normally how that's assessed is through what they call an industrial appraisal. Okay, and I don't know if one's been done recently or not, but that is something that we would, you know, there's a cost associated with that.
Sure.
The other thing is, and possibly you might know a little bit about, the insurance carrier can also come in and possibly put a cost per square foot on the buildings per se. I think, you know, the policies as they read now are certainly, you know, the coverages are in line with what the actual valuations that we've come up with. But to be, you know, in most cases in institutional properties, we do normally see some type of industrial appraisal done.
And that gets done periodically?
Yeah, I mean, they'll do it once and then every, you know, every year they'll just kind of update it based on the cost of inflation. And then you have it and it's, you know, and any new assets are just added into that industrial appraisal. So, yeah, so that's, I hope I answered your question.
No, that's, so you have to look at each part of it and decide what is the coverage needed for that
Yes.
particular issue. And that would be somewhat subjective, the different carrier, the different insurance companies are going to have different ways of deciding.
Evaluating, yes. The other thing I will say to the benefit in this scenario is your coverage is all blanketed. Okay, which means it's, it's, it doesn't matter where it's located, it's all one limit. So it gives you a little more, a lot more flexibility in the coverage that's being provided, yes. So that's definitely a positive to that as well. Is there anything you want to add on that?
No, I was just going to mention the blanketing.
Yeah.
But since we're specifically speaking of property, we have a lot of enhancements too for, like we give half a million dollars in coverage for property not scheduled anywhere else in the policy. Just if it's not scheduled somewhere else, here's half a million dollars for it. So we do try and take that into account.
Demolition costs are separated out. There's so many ancillary coverages above me on just the physical coverage on the structure and contents as well, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You mentioned blanket coverage. What is the limit of your blanket coverage? Is there?
Fifty-one million. And that's for buildings and personal property. So everything, it's a little elementary, but imagine picking up this building, turning it over and dumping it out. Everything that came out is what's considered your business personal property, unless it is scheduled elsewhere in the policy. For example, we have, you know, athletic equipment scheduled elsewhere. We have some photographic and camera equipment, we have computer equipment. We have all different types of equipment, especially equipment that leaves the premises elsewhere in the policy. But let me just get you, it's fifty-one million, five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
And the other thing we do on an annual basis is that there's an inflation guard. So what we'll do is at renewal, make sure that that coverage has been beefed up to make, you know, to adequately cover whatever happened in the marketplace with inflation. So, you know, building and labor costs increased, we don't, you know, we don't want to insure that it's the same value for ten years and it's fifty-one million now and fifty-one million ten years from now, that wouldn't work, right? So we keep, you know, it's constantly increased every year to keep up with that increase in building and labor costs.
That leads into my next question. Can you discuss our builder's risk that we have or what we have?
So the, I believe there's a hundred thousand dollars. I actually have a little sheet right here. Automatically included, but that's for any new project that you're considering. Yeah, there's a hundred thousand dollars for what's considered a newly constructed or newly acquired building. But that's just what's automatically thrown into the policy. If the district is planning a build, what we would do is we would talk to you about it. We would walk through it, what are you building, where are you building? How much do you need to insure it for? Is the general contractor going to insure it until it's completed or do you need to insure it until it is completed? And we would work with you and then we would add that coverage on a per-project basis. And the value of that versus just having this blanket coverage is we know about it, we can follow up on the timeline of is it being completed, when is it completed, and then add it to your actual insurance program so that it's not just forgotten about because no one told us because we've got blanket coverage listed.
So our new building that we're building right now, we're covered for a hundred thousand right now since it's being built? We're covered for a hundred thousand for the new building that we're building? Is that what we're covered for right now for our builder's risk?
It's a garage for maintenance kind of building.
Yes.
It's in process.
Yes. Is the general contractor that is doing the construction carrying the builder's risk on it or is the district responsible? Okay.
But with you, we would be covered for a hundred thousand. So if a tornado came in, we would be covered for a hundred thousand with you.
Correct, but we would be excess over the general contractor. And that's typically how it works for larger builds like for a school district, is you're going to hire an architect, you're going to hire an engineer, you're going to hire a general contractor and they are responsible for ensuring that structure and any items waiting to be installed in that structure up until the time it is complete and turned over to the district. So at which time, you know, Mr. Latour will let us know, hey, this building's done. We'll come out, we'll inspect it, we'll do that price per square footage, put a valuation on it, and then we will add it to your blanket coverage of that fifty-one million.
Then our premium would increase.
Yeah.
Was that like anything else?
Correct.
At that point as well, and the reason, you know, that process works well is in having that communication and not just assuming, well, it's, okay, it's covered on the builder's risk, now it's covered as part of it. We are actually increasing the valuation, you know, the value of that fifty-one million. So now we're accounting for it, so we're not behind on coverage. So that's number one. Number two, if there's assets, there's personal property, it's going to be put in that building and we don't really know about it because it was, well, it's covered by the builder's risk. Well, now all of a sudden, you know, if there's some valuable items in there, maybe even some equipment that goes off the premises that shouldn't be scheduled, if we're not having that conversation or don't know about it, then that, you know, that could potentially not be covered. So it's just, in my opinion, I think, like Jenna said, normally a contractor's picking up that coverage anyways. That's just standard, normally standard procedure. I'm not saying, you know, every situation's different, but that's what we've seen over the years. But when it's all said and done is when we want to get it added on to the policy and properly insure, so.
This hundred thousand, just to add on to that, is more designed for like if you're putting up a shed or a small outbuilding and the district is doing it yourselves, your maintenance workers are doing it. That's what this hundred thousand is really, really designed for.
Yeah, ancillary.
When the, when our new maintenance garage is done, is when you will take over the coverage of that building. It's when we sign off on it, when the contractor has completed everything under the agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
Bill, I have a question.
Yes.
Mike, don't listen. So say next year, you know, you start to look at things, things change in the district, change nationally. The Buffalo Bills beat the Steelers pretty bad.
Yeah, I was going to go there, but I figured.
So we give sour taste about Utica. Now, the point is, do you, you know, you look at all three, so you're committed to us first and Utica second. I'm not saying you're not committed to Utica, but what I mean is you're going to give us our best way.
Yes.
So CM Region is the best or Liberty Mutual may be the best, you're going to help us with that.
Exactly, I think we owe it to the district to provide options and I think that's what, you know, that's how we earn our keep. I mean, again, the product's the product. I think it's, you know, providing these ancillary coverages and us being able to go out to the marketplace and really have a pulse on what's going on. You know, to say, well, you know, let's every year shop it out and, you know, be moving like a ping pong ball around is not a great thing to do.
I'm saying a major event.
But, you know, I think, and there is some benefits to having longevity with the carrier. But on the other side of it, you know, when you start to see the marketplace changing or one carrier having significant rate adjustments for really no reason at all, you know, it's worth looking at. And I think at least every third year is, assuming everything is kind of trucking along pretty consistent, at least every three years, you should be really looking at what the market holds. Because, you know, it's just, it's just a function of, you'll see, like, things change. Products change, you know, carriers, their underwriting changes. If you don't do that, you kind of get complacent and can kind of get lulled into a sense of security. It's just not, it might not be.
And you can overpay or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. It's part of doing the due diligence for the school on the insurance side of things. And, you know, there are, you know, again, Mike, I'm sorry, but, you know, there's other carriers trying to make a foray into the market as well. And that's our job to vet through all that and see who is actually viable and who's not, what makes sense, you know. Be a proactive advisor, that's what we do. And I think, you know, the districts that we do ensure value that greatly. And it's our hope that we can do the same for you and that you'll feel that same value in us as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Can you explain the general liability coverage and the automobile liability? And then how the umbrella works as excess coverage to an audience that doesn't understand how an umbrella excess works?
You want to jump on that if you want?
It doesn't matter. I can give you a real, real short, sweet and simple. So your general liability is for your bodily injury and property damage. So your slips and trips and falls. You know, someone's painting something and paint gets on somebody else's vehicle, things of that nature. Your automobile liability is just that. If there would be an accident in a school-owned vehicle or a hired or a non-owned vehicle, and that would be the liability for bodily injury and property damage to the other party. So those are third-party sort of coverages. And the umbrella, the way it works is you get a limit for your general liability and you get a limit for your automobile liability. And then the umbrella goes over top of it. So if those limits should be exhausted, then the umbrella will kick in for an additional coverage for five million.
And that's the umbrella that we have at five.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have another question, but I don't want to take it right from the board. So I'm going to ask these questions because we've heard a lot of, in insurance, no offense, but it's like, you know, a bunch of different mirrors, you know, in some respects.
Yeah.
And you make it simple to understand. But obviously the board, you know, they're always concerned. So if you pay less money or you have less coverage in a certain area, more coverage in another area, the way you look at it is what is most beneficial to the school and if it covers what the size school, for example, Seneca Valley would be different, they've got more buildings, et cetera, their policy would be different. But you're comfortable, what you presented us with the Utica situation is good in all those areas. That's how you felt and that's what you underwrite. And I mean, saying that you feel comfortable, it's not just to get in the door and give us ten thousand dollars off.
Absolutely. I mean, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I could just make one point to Mr. Dawson's question earlier about the limits and how we come to them. And with property, it's pretty simple because it is what it is, this is how much it costs. When we look at liability limits, it's based a lot on loss experience. You know, we've been insuring schools for forty-seven years. We've been paying losses for that long. I could sell you a hundred million dollars worth of coverage and charge you for it for a coverage you'll never need. But what we're going to do is give you the coverages you need and the limits that you need for the right price. If you don't need a hundred million in coverage, I'm not going to try and sell you a hundred million in coverage. The products that we put out there are going to cover. We're growing our school book of business. We're not doing that because we're shortchanging our schools and we're losing them because they feel that they're getting ripped off.
So if it gets around, hey, Utica doesn't cover enough, everybody's going to drop Utica.
We don't, we're not running into limit problems. That's why we don't, you know, like I said, we could charge you more to give you a higher limit that you'll never need, but who benefits from that? We do, if you want, but I'm not sure that that's why you're here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I mean, I have a comment and it's nothing against Utica or the Ron Dunn Agency, but unfortunately, the process has nothing to do with you, but the board process failed. And the presentation should have been prior to the decision so that the board had, and the policy should have been met. And there should have been an order that was done, not just having the presentation after the fact. So that's what I think the problem is with the community and with some board members is that there wasn't a proper process and there wasn't proper information given at adequate time to do that.
And I totally agree. And the reason I agree is, you know, I've been here, this is my sixth year and I think we shouldn't do those things and I'm right on. I guess my failure was the previous agency never did that with us either. So that's on me. However, they didn't mention, you know, we want to come in and talk to you, Dr. Matty or Josh, and look and see if there's a better product. So I do agree that that way to do it is a good way. And then, you know, next year you have competition or find out what's there and then talk about it when you want to do it. So I'm not in disagreement with that. My thing is, it's never happened since I came here. And of course, we had a good agent, good man who I knew, you know, but we didn't have that before. And it only unfortunately happened this year because we weren't, we were looking at an increase, what was the increase? Twelve percent. And he wanted to see why it was going twelve percent. So that's that. But I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I agree, policies sometimes need to be tweaked and followed in better ways.
Right, policy needed and we needed to have these meetings prior so that we would have adequate information. I mean, Josh had told me that it was, the board decision was only to pay the bill. It was not to pick the agents.
And that's what it's been for.
But based on the policy, we didn't follow our policy.
And we didn't for ten years, unfortunately.
But again, this is only my second year, so I clearly.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Now.
This is my fifth and it happened before.
And I mean, Josh is a new business manager as well.
And can I jump in too? You know, I've been on the board fifteen-plus years, four superintendents. Never ever have, and I appreciate you fellows coming. We've learned a lot this evening. But never have we done this in the past. And I just have four superintendents. I've been with them.
Right, we just need to review our policy then because unfortunately, we're in violation. Our board is violating our own policies that we have in place.
Agree Vanessa, yes.
If I could, the one thing I can say is we are available at any point in time to, if the board would like us to come, we're more than willing to do that. In fact, we embrace it. Because I think the more we're engaged with the district, the more, you know, relationship that's built, we are more on the same page and we're, you know, we're tackling things together. And that's, that's the kind of relationship I want to build with the district and I know I speak for the rest of my team here as well. So, you know, we're excited to do that with you moving forward.
Personally, for, I'm only speaking on behalf of myself and not the rest of the board. But when the board changes, that I feel is the most important time so that the new members know, I'm a new member myself. But this November with the election, there's going to be a board change. So maybe at that time, there will be questions that this board does not have.
And we're happy to.
So we may be able to discuss that.
Yep, that we'd be glad to attend a meeting or whatever to help in any way we can. Yeah, that we'd be glad to attend a meeting or whatever to, to help in any way we can. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will add, add that there, with the majority of the board, there is a trust that members and others, um, in the administration do what they're supposed to do. And so I think quite often, it's under, it was understood by me. I was comfortable that people did what they were supposed to do, and I greatly appreciate you coming in because I have the same confidence I had when, um, it was questioned, um, about what, uh, Mr. Latour did. He did exactly what you said and presented tonight, and it makes me feel even more confident. And I wanna thank you very much, Josh, for all that you've done. And thank you very much for your presentation, because I feel really good.
Great. Thank you very much.
I always wanna do, I'm a new one too. And all I wanna do is what's best for the students and the community and this, this school system. And I feel much, much better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Latour, can you comment upon what point and what date and time we received a renewal quote from our existing agent? And the expiration date of our calls?
We normally, like this year, receive it mid-June, mid-early June. Either at that time, it was higher, um, and it has been, it has been increasing over the last three or four years. I started this process, uh, in anticipation that the current carrier with CM Region was going to be high, because that's always the carrier, that's the only insurance company that's been sold us. So I knew there were some other companies out there, Utica, Liberty Mutual, to get pricing from to see where we were at, 'cause I did feel that we were, we were paying a high amount for our insurance. And that's the reason I started this process. Um, our policies renew on July 1st each year. I normally get pricing mid-June, end of June, um, so it doesn't really give us any time to do anything with it. So that's why I started this process early, um, because there's a lot of work involved with changing insurances and going out for insurance as well as it were.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any specific insurance questions?
Just to say that, uh, thank you for due diligence, uh, for what you brought up. It is our due diligence to check these things and to research other insurances. I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't do it more frequently. Thank you for due diligence.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome to stay. No, there isn't too much else.
You're free to leave.
You're free to leave.
New York's a long way away.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
The next item on the agenda is the patrons' public comment session. To speak at the school board meeting, Wilmington Area School Board welcomes residents of the district and commends you for attending this meeting. We also gladly invite your comments and questions. During the initial public participation session at the beginning of the meeting, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the board. You will be asked to state your name and address and may speak for up to three minutes. This public participation, participation session is normally limited to about forty-five minutes. Prior to adjournment at the end of the meeting, residents will be offered another opportunity to pose questions on items that might have come up during the meeting itself. These comments will likewise be limited to three minutes. The board may respond immediately to general questions or comments if appropriate, but will often instruct the superintendent or business manager to do further research and report back to the board and resident. If you have specific questions, the board will try its best to respond, either at this meeting or there, shortly thereafter. The board wants to ensure that it is fully informed before responding, and so if your questions are not addressed immediately, this does not indicate a lack of interest on the board's part. Finally, to protect rights to privacy, the board cannot respond to complaints or comments about specific individuals, employees, or students in public sessions. And the first name is Rachel Singer.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Singer, and this is my husband Greg. We live next door at 211 High Street. On August 4th, our vehicles were damaged by a paint project that included painting the lamp post in the parking lot. Both of our vehicles have blue dots of paint all over each vehicle. We tried to wash the paint off, but it would not come off. I emailed the board and Dr. Matty regarding the damage, and I attached pictures to the email on August 9. Tuesday, August 10th, Mr. Latour and Mr. Kohler came over to our driveway to see the damage and talk to us. Mr. Kohler acknowledged that this was an accident and that they thought they had waited until the wind had died down enough. Mr. Latour instructed us to get an estimate, email it to him, and he would make arrangements for payment. We did that. At the meeting with Mr. Latour and Mr. Kohler, my husband was very clear that we were not going to be financially responsible for the damage repair. Mr. Latour agreed. After we sent Mr. Latour the estimate on August 13th as requested, he advised he submitted the information to the insurance carrier and that they would be in touch with us. This left us a little perplexed because Mr. Latour had previously told us he would arrange payment. Let me describe our experience so far with Utica National, the new insurance provider. On August 18th, I believe it was, I received a phone call to my cellphone from Melissa with Utica. She advised she didn't have the correct spelling of my first name or last name. She wasn't sure what the damage actually was, other than it involved paint, and she did not have the estimate. She went on to ask me a few questions regarding the make, model, and year of our vehicles. I wasn't sure, so I declined to answer, so I didn't provide incorrect information. She further advised she needed many specific photographs sent to her. I asked her if we could send her the pictures from our driveway or if the estimate place had to do it. She stated that causes a lot more back and forth, so she'd rather deal with the estimate place directly. She asked me if I had turned the damage into our insurance. I said no, and that the only thing we had done so far was gotten an estimate. She stated she didn't get the estimate. I told her this needed to go through my husband, so I wrote down her information and our claim number, then we hung up. I told my husband the insurance company wants us to take the cars back to the estimate place. Since both my husband and I both work, it's very inconvenient for us to go back to the estimate place a second time when we already had an estimate. My husband advised Mr. Latour of this, so he contacted Utica. He said that Melissa is going to send us a link to send the pictures directly, and then that way, the turnaround is faster. The exact opposite of what she had said to me on the phone. So then my husband contacted Mr. Latour regarding this. Mr. Latour, uh, told Utica some unnecessarily named comments to describe Greg and I. Uh, Utica's Melissa's response was that everything has to be in the claim's name.
She's just saying, he's saying inappropriate comments, you can't say that.
You can't say that.
You can continue your story.
You can continue your story.
Yeah.
Everything has to be done in the claim's name, so I, and sent in by them, meaning Greg and I. Again, the opposite of what she had told me previously. Melissa suggested that if we were unwilling to work with Utica, we could turn it into our insurance and let them recoup the amount. So fast forward to today, which is August 25th, sixteen days after our initial claim, we received word from Utica that an independent appraiser will be in touch with us to schedule the appraisal for the damage. I'm not sure what happens after that. This timeline seems excessive to me. We are also concerned that since this insurance company is in New York, that customer service might be more difficult, perhaps. We're currently waiting on the schedule with the adjuster.
And you were, is that the end?
That's the end of what I have. This is, well, I have more, but I only get three minutes.
Yes, that's your three.
I figured you would stop me.
Well, it's three and a half, actually.
I, I, I petted concisive, I played.
Okay. You did fine. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Greg Singer.
Same as Greg.
Yes, I'm Greg Singer, also at 211 High Street. Uh, I just wanted to share with the board that, you know, our frustration of, um, you know, our vehicles have blue dots all over the windshields. So when the sun is hitting the car, adjuster angle, all we see are dots all over our windshield. Now, as it gets darker out, you know, luckily, we're in summer, but as it gets darker out, I'm concerned that, you know, the sun, headlights are in front of us, we're gonna have these dots on our windshield. I tried to get them off myself, and I couldn't get them off. So we're just trying to, we came to the board for help. We're trying to get this resolved as quickly as possible. It's a safety issue for me and my family, and we're just asking for assistance. We're trying to get this resolved.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, who responds, who, is there any follow-up in our part?
They struck me. You're the business manager, so we'll get.
Okay.
Right. It'll be Josh and Dr. Matty that follow up with the thing.
Can I just say though, and, and maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, when I have an accident, whether it's my fault or not, I call my insurance agency and say it's the other guy's fault, which is clearly, to me, is the school district's fault. But I will call my agency, and I let them fight it out with the other insurance company. I stay out of it, 'cause that way I don't have all that frustration that you have. And I, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, you know, this works with the school, but, you know.
Well, and that's what we were confused. We're not sure why it was sent to the insurance agency. So we just thought, we were understanding that they were just gonna pay to get the, the paint off. And then, well, then everything went to Utica, and then everything just started moving to the electric shops.
I, I understand, yeah. I just let your agency fight Utica. That way you don't have all this frustration on you. I mean, that's why.
They probably don't wanna put a claim on their end.
But it really, really wouldn't be a claim against, I mean, I don't understand exactly how that works either, but.
It'd be reimbursed for the deductible, and they would also, the insurance companies would be in subrogation.
That would be comprehensive as opposed to collision.
Right.
It's an accident.
No, no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't really count against your policy. It's comprehensive.
It doesn't count against their policy either way, because it goes back to Utica for payment.
Right, right. Either way. It's not a collision claim, so it's okay.
All right. Moving on, Mr. Larson.
Podium's about a foot too low, so I'll just take a chair.
I agree with that.
Just start with, the presentation that was done tonight was excellent. A lot of good information. Unfortunately, at this stage of the game, it's irrelevant. I mean, as was said, this should have been done six months ago, eight months ago, a year ago. The board has a policy, policy eight twelve, it's already been brought up, that an advisor has to be appointed for this process. I asked, I believe, Mr. Bonner, you answered last week, I said, was Josh Latour that advisor? And, you know, paraphrase, but I believe you said, he is not that advisor. So as it stands right now, the board had no advisor to take this action. I mean, it was taken on a recommendation by Mr. Latour, totally against board policies to how this should have been done. And I have no issue at all with Dunn Agency. I am a Bills fan, so I have no problems with Utica.
I don't mind if it was up.
Yeah. But, you know, it doesn't change the fact that this was done completely, absolutely incorrectly. It, it could not have been done worse. This presentation that was made, I can guarantee you, Liberty Mutual could make the same presentation. CM Regions could make the same presentation. I think they did a great job in explaining it, but the horse was already out of the barn. This is not the time to be doing this. And the decision was made incorrectly according to your policy. And that was one of the things Mr. Centroni kinda pounded on, well, I'm gonna give you policies to protect, and I'm gonna give you policies to protect. Well, that was the whole point of eight twelve. So there's a policy to make sure correct decisions were made. And, you know, I mean, I think everyone has agreed, no one here right now, since this group has left, is an insurance expert. That was the whole point of the policy, that policy that the board has, so that an expert could advise the board and say, good, bad, indifferent. It can't just be, well, I called these guys, our agent didn't volunteer to do this. That's wrong. I mean, and, and that's the whole point. And again, you know, with all respect to Ms. Foltz, saying that, well, I trust Josh, that's completely irrelevant also. It doesn't matter whether you trust Josh, don't trust Josh. He is not qualified or credible to make that recommendation. That's the point of the policy. It's probably about three minutes.
Good sir. Good time.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Can I take a comment as chair of the policy committee?
Well, I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
When, when the insurance was brought to us, had we not placed it, we wouldn't have had insurance. We had no proposal from our expiring carrier.
So you couldn't have just continued with Ferns and Burns until?
We had no proposal from them, other than a premium figure. We had no quote, nothing.
Were they, were they asked for a proposal?
Yes, they were.
And they refused to offer it?
Not, I don't know that they refused, but it was not timely, and we were at a meeting, and July 1 came right after. We, had we not placed the coverage when we did, the school district would have had no liability, no property coverage, no inland marine, no umbrella, no earthquake, no anything. At, at minimum, at least we had coverage.
You, you, yeah, I mean, there, there's nothing from Burns and Burns. And I'm, I'm not arguing whether they should have it or whether Dunn should have it, but again.
I asked two meetings ago for them to provide their renewal proposal to us, and they stood there and talked about something, but they never provided a renewal proposal to this board.
Did they, did they present to Josh? Because this board doesn't get a lot of stuff. I mean, our board is really cut, like, out of the wood on a lot of things.
We're not gonna receive those policies.
But if Josh.
No, the loop on the law. I'm, I'm sorry, with all due respect.
It doesn't go to us.
We do not keep.
They don't bring a whole copy of thirty-seven pages to us.
No. We, we can go back into interviews, and we can go into all of that.
We can.
Was Josh given anything? I understand Ms. Foltz wasn't, and I understand I wasn't, but was Josh given anything?
What was your renewal quote, Josh?
Quote, for example. Yeah, ma'am?
No, what was it? It was what? It was what kind of document?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, um, insurance figures.
But it was, it came how?
It came like it normally does with the coverages, like the main general liability.
Like it has for the last ten years, or however long you've been around?
On a letter.
I had asked for it to put it in a, in a form that we were familiar with getting.
So you got an email, or you got a quotation?
The quote was sent via email.
And it was premium figures? Was it anything other than that?
Uh, a basic summary like they do of any major, um, changes, increases, increases, additions, things like that.
And that was received the end of January?
Middle of June, June 20th, June 21st, something like that.
And that was the first you had heard anything from the expiring?
That was when I finally got everything back, the information, their, their, um, their renewal quote for twenty-one, twenty-two.
And at that time, did we have the renewal proposal from you?
I believe I got it around the same time. Because that process took, you quit, you switch, that takes so long. That was, yeah, that was thirty days I had to get that done.
Madam President?
Yes.
The issue of policies is frustrating, especially in any large institution that has so many of them. And as we heard tonight from Mrs. Harris, she was here with four superintendents, and this never came up before. So obviously, the policy was overlooked for a very long time. And I'm sure we could find other things in our policies that we haven't done in the detail that is suggested, just because there are so darn many of them, and you get into a pattern of doing things one way, and you, you never go back and read it over and over again. Now, we have to be attentive as we can, but I just think we have to consider also the extensive number of policies in an institution like a school district. So I'm thankful that Josh, now, sure, in the best of all worlds, he would have read that policy and then done it differently. And we've already talked about that. But the fact that he took the initiative several months ahead to do, to have some alternative to receiving a policy notice a couple of weeks before we had to vote on it, was, you know, I'm glad he did that, because as you've just discussed here, we would have been in much bigger mess. If we didn't have that, we would have been stuck with what we had.
But in a case regarding, and especially this case, what you're talking about, we've. But, in a case regarding, and especially this case, where you're talking about with millions of dollars, a liability at hand.
We're not talking, I'm sorry, this isn't a discussion at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was...
No, I was commenting in general, my comments in general for all of us to consider, that policies are, are important, and we need to pay attention to them, but it's not, should not surprise us that we miss things. And that's what I would say about policies, in much smaller organizations, you have fewer policies or maybe no policies, that's a very different handle. But this is a very complex policy and you have a lot of different levels to deal with.
And in regards to the policy too, is, I, I did reach out to other school districts to see what procedure was, because the way we did it, I thought was different than what a lot of schools did. What I did and went through the process was what, what majority of the local districts do in the area. Like I said, I, I was not aware of that policy, but what I did was, after consulting with local districts, what I was doing was another form.
Yeah.
And that's why I didn't...
Heard of that point, I, I reached out to other school districts myself, who have similar, if not the same, policy, because a lot of them follow the, the PSBA policy handbook. And it was actually comical, the number of school districts that have insurance committees, or supposed to have insurance committees, don't have them, the insurance advisor, don't have them. The reason being, the inception of the business manager and the responsibilities that the business managers have assumed over the last decade, they've become such an important, they've assumed such an important role and become such an integral part of the administration and the management and operation of a school district, that they've absorbed a lot of these ancillary committees and advisors, because it became impossible for a school to function. I got to meet with this committee, I got to meet with that committee, I got to talk to this advisor. It, it became too, the bureaucracy levels became too much.
So, that policy, I think, needs review.
Needs review, it probably should be, probably referred to the, the superintendent, business manager, or their, or their representative.
Right.
And what we're relying upon as an, quote, advisor, are the insurance agents.
Yeah.
They're, they're the people, when your, when your car needs fixed, where are you taking your car? You're taking your car to the auto body shop or the mechanic. Why? Why do they want to bid from the auto, the auto shop and mechanic? Because those are the people who know, those are the people who understand. You don't ask a lawyer about an insurance policy unless you're suing somebody and they want to know what the limits are. But, you, the business manager has to rely upon a third party to gain that information and assess it and then evaluate a price. That, that's, so, I don't want to get lost on this, we violated a policy, because I'm going to be here to tell you that if we went to every single school district and worked through a policy handbook, you're going to find a lot of violations of policies, because just in the month of June alone, there are 12 policies that need amended. And I, it, the school system itself and policies have become so cumbersome, it's, it's difficult to, to manage, it really is.
So, where are we legally, since we did not meet a policy? I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we're fine, I have no problem with any label, I have no, no issue with any type of event or, or contract that was entered yet, because if I looked at Josh's, if, if we looked at his job responsibilities, job description and past, I'm quite confident that we could identify Josh as an advisor to give the board information on insurance. And, and certainly, that's consistent with what's happened here, I've only been here for four years, but, Ms. Harris, you, you expressed that this has never happened in the, in all the time you've been in Wilmington. This is consistent with the practice, it's been ratified and affirmed by prior superintendents, prior business managers, so I, I don't think that we've stepped out of bounds, we can clean up our, our policy and our actions, it's going to take a concerted effort, but...
A policy is only, that has not been followed, it causes you trouble when somebody sues you over not following your policy.
Right.
So, unless we want to sue the board for not following its policy, it just needs fixed, because we've now noticed it.
That's all.
Thank you, that was a very helpful history of how this has developed with the increased responsibility of business managers.
I hope that helped at all.
Okay, one more speaker, Mr. Brush.
Scott Brush, 575, Ponce de la Trilla, 5243. You know, speaking with my tax attorney today, because I run a business and the tax code is very, very complicated, I asked him a question, and his first response to me, Scott, is ignorance of the law is no defense. Did you not, your ignorance of a policy is no defense. Mr. Bonner, with all due respect, I respect for you to say that violating a policy on our school district happens, so it's okay here, it's not okay.
That's not what I said, Mr. Brush.
It's not okay to violate a policy. I'm not speaking, I, I, I should be able to speak right now. All right? I'm always speaking with Mr. Bonner. It, it is, it is not okay to violate a policy.
And I didn't say it's okay to violate a policy.
Here's what I thought I was going to hear tonight when I came to this board meeting, I thought we were going to man up, we were going to admit we were wrong, we were going to say, you know what, we need to start the process out. I do have a quick question, I heard Jenna say, they put it out for bid, how many bids were there?
Three.
There were three bids?
Yes, that's what she expressed, she said they took, they spoke with...
Now, how many different companies?
CM Region.
No, they represent Dunn, how many other agencies beside Dunn actually bid on, besides Dunn? Just now, so the answer is one.
It's professional service, it doesn't require a bid.
There was one, it wasn't put out for bid. Here's my recommendation, you go back to policy 812. It's this, I've read it, I have it right here in front of me, it was adopted in 2015, Dr. Matty, you weren't here.
That was right before me, yes.
Right, because you left in 2016 when I left. Mrs. Foltz, you were here, but I have another question, I read a lot of policies out on, out on the board, and I went to personnel policies today. I was strongly, strongly think that most of your teachers don't read personnel policies, and one personnel policy that I read, that I'll bring into you next month, says that a teacher or an employee may be terminated for violating this policy. I'm sure you wouldn't say, oh, it's okay to violate that policy, but we're still going to terminate you. It's not okay. It is not okay.
Thank you. And that's the end of the speakers who signed the speech. And now we are to the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve this evening's agenda? Mrs. Harris, second. Mr. Kirk. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We do not have an update on health, PDE, and DOH communication, personnel. We have an exciting item on our agenda this evening, we have the hiring of a Director of Special Education. I would like a motion from the Education Academic Committee?
Personnel.
Personnel.
They're going to fight over it.
They're going to fight over it. Personnel, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve Mr. Michael Konglos as the Director of Special Education with a starting salary of $88,000 for the 2021-22 school year. All paperwork and clearances are on file.
Second.
No, I was going to give Mrs. Phillips a second.
I rescind my second, that's nothing else.
Mrs. Phillips, would you second for academic, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
I'd like to thank everyone who applied, and, and we appreciate that, but also, all the people that participated, we did not make this easy, there were three rounds in over a two and a half week period or so, and there was about 26 different stakeholders that, within this whole, that interviewed, so I wanted to give everybody, appreciate whatever they want, so, that's all.
Okay. Is this a roll call, ma'am?
For hiring?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's...
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to Mr. Konglos.
He'll be here at the next meeting in September.
September.
With all due administrative.
Okay. Patrons, call a comment session for the end of the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you come forward, please?
Sure.
And sign in.
Well, do you want me to write her name forward and then she can fill in the rest?
Either way.
I'll give you the...
Pierce Center, 117 James Street, New Wilmington. So, I just want to, I'm not going to echo what everybody has said, but I do want to point out that I went back and looked online, you guys do this every July, if you don't have a meeting in July, you improve your insurance in, in August, that's a pretty easy target, it took about two minutes for me to go online. So, I pulled the Burns and Burns quotes, renewal quotes, since 2014 for you, and they're all dated. Dated 6/26/14, you received your renewal notice, and you voted on it on September 14. 2015, you actually received it from John, July 22nd, I'm going to say John, John Kehoe, he retired and we all know. You voted on that in August 10th, but 15th, because you didn't have a July meeting. In 18, or in 17, you voted July 17th on the renewal notice, in 18, that renewal notice was dated June 23rd, next year, June 18th. So, I guess my point is, I just want to save the record, I don't do business with Burns and Burns, I don't do business with Ron Dunn, we do have a business and we have a substantial insurance policy, right? I've never heard of a renewal policy 120 days in advance. I stepped down, called my insurance agent, who knows the Dunn Agency, and she said rates aren't even published 120 days, that it's unheard of, you won't get a rate in anything less than 60. So, I just want to correct the record, because I don't think it's fair, a partner you guys have had since like 1986, to be disparaging of that company. Regardless of that, we save money, regardless of the fact your policy needs updated, I just want to say for the record, what happened this year is indicative of reality that has happened every year since 2014. I'd wager if I went back further, which the public record doesn't show that, if we go back to 14 on the board docs, you would probably see the same pattern going back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Brush?
I promised I won't speak about insurance. Mrs. Barra, I just wanted to follow up from last week when I was speaking about Mr. Hartman. I went back and I found an email dated May 19th, 2016, from Dr. Michelle Miller, I wrote an email, a copy to every one of the board members and also the administration after this meeting. Below is information requested at the last board meeting regarding the existing stadium scoreboard post cost, and it's got a full breakdown. One, two, three, four, bullet point number four. Blackcock Neff would install the sign using the existing scoreboard post and beams, what they did just a few years ago, cost for installation is $6,788. Now, I believe you 100% that you were told it was going to cost $25,000. I believe you were told that. And I believe you were told that for a reason, because somebody wanted that project rejected, and we all know who that was. But I will send you the email, the, the cost in the end, after they were going to get all the other months, was $2,988. It's a really interesting email from Dr. Miller. Just recently, a couple of years ago, the installation was only $9,600, never a million years, but that installation paid $25,000, but I do believe you were told that.
If I've been in the school, how long have I been?
Dr. Matty, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the, what is the next step for filling our guidance position, or you...
So, since it was, since it was tonight, what we'll do is, we will advertise tomorrow.
Internally.
Internally and externally, based on, to get it started, and then we'll proceed, we'll try to do a quick turnaround as fast as we can.
And as far as Mr. Konglos's original position?
Yeah.
Pre-guidance?
Yeah.
Or do we have that adequately filled?
Yeah, we have a teacher in for him, there, and he's going to work with that. One of the things we'll do with Mr. Konglos is do a transition, so he will work with guidance, especially when you begin the new year, I mean, the new school year, kids changing schedules, needing things, he'll do a lot of that. But then some major items that he handled, he would do, I meant with special education today, for example, just to get, Dr. really helped very much. So, we'll do the transition until we get the next, and the other guidance counselors are very cooperative, I'm sure they're helping.
So, other than filling the guidance position, as special ed goes, we are adequate?
Yes.
We are good, we're not looking for any additional staff?
Yeah, no, right now, we're not, we, we have, there's someone in every job where someone's not here, for example, someone could be on sabbatical, et cetera, whatever, those are positions we have, yes.
Per-professional positions.
Yeah, we're always looking for per-professional, I got a few today, so if you know somebody that's interested, it's a great way to, you know, come in and help the kids. And then we'll also have Mr. Konglos review things and go over what he thinks.
All right. Last item is adjournment, there's more public...
Just a quick question, Angela Seaman, 4661 Old Mercer Road, just in follow-up to you, the hiring of Mr. Konglos.
Yes.
Do you foresee any issues with, you know, getting him in there and getting like the IP meetings and everything on track? No delays foreseen?
No, that's what I went over today, and Ms. Grubbe helped a lot in the transition, of knowing when to do things, and fortunately, we have a lot of seasoned people in special education, and so we're looking at that right away.
Okay, it's our second year in the district and our son's in first grade, so we're just...
That's okay.
And your name again? Angela Seaman?
Yeah.
It's S-E-M-A-N.
That's a good question. If you have a problem, call us.
Thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Larson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I wanted to address, I mean, I am sure there are antiquated, overrun with policies, things that need change, however, there are very few that can have a financial implication in the millions, like an insurance policy, if it's not done correctly. So, I think that was the impetus to put that policy in place, and I think it's a very good policy. The other thing I'd like to address is just a, a quick question for Mr. Bonner, you know, it was brought up that Dunn Agency did go and get three bids, however, and ethically, can you regard someone who has a fiduciary interest in obtaining a piece of business and impartial advisement?
I'm a professional.
I realize.
They're considered a professional, and professionals don't have to bid to work. It's a professional service, it's a service industry, they're professionals.
But they have a fiduciary interest in the outcome?
I have a fiduciary interest in the outcome as well. I have a, I have an interest in, in the outcome of any decision, the opinion that I run around behind the school, as does an insurance agent. They don't, they don't, you don't bid out of an insurance agent, because they're, you're seeking their professional service, because they're bidding to the same, same company, the same marketplace.
But they have a...
So, Joe Smith and Ron Dunn, Liberty's going to give them the same, the same price, that, that's the problem that you, you encounter. Do you understand?
I understand, but I don't agree. I, I, I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, I don't agree with what you're saying.
This isn't something that I conjured up, and I'm not reinventing the will, I've had discussions with other solicitors in the county, I've had discussions with other business managers in the county, Josh has done the same, and I assure you that this is the same practice that's been employed, so I'm not doing anything that's out of character or illegal.
But, I, I'm not saying it's illegal, but what I'm implying, what I'm saying is, and what you're implying, is that Dunn would give us the same number as Burns and Burns, as would Bob's Insurance or whoever, because it's professional service.
Well, based upon my discussions with, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
But based upon my discussions with Josh, Burns and Burns did provide a quote, and they provided a quote from their carrier, and their carrier was CM Region. That quote was substantially higher than the quote that Josh received from the Dunn Agency, excuse me.
But then...
So, there, so, there was a de facto opportunity to quote, bid to work, so, if you do have a fiduciary obligation and responsibility to, to meet the financial needs of the district and provide them with a, with a product, then Burns and Burns should have revisited the market and repriced their product. I don't know if they did that, I don't know if that's the price that they came up with, but their price was more than the price that our business manager received from the Dunn Agency. So, for 21-22, under the circumstances, the product and the price, based upon the representations that are made by Utica, provide adequate coverage at a cheaper... a cheaper cost.
Yeah, but the problem with that...
So, what's the problem with that?
Well, I can tell you very easily, the problem with that is, you don't know, you can't tell me, Josh can't tell me, no one on this board can tell me, if the policies that they did were apples to apples.
They did this...
There could be differences in the coverage.
They explained that, they couldn't give us same urgent.
They didn't. They didn't. I mean, they explained what they do, and it was, as I said, it was a great, and I'm paraphrasing, it was a great dog of publishing. But any other agency, including Burns and Burns, totally Burns and Burns out of it. Another agency could have come in here and brought Liberty Mutual in and done the same presentation. It was not bid out.
Mr. Larson, I don't, I, I've been here, and John always came in, and I trusted John. I can't say this Burns and Burns represent those other Liberty Mutual and Utica. I don't know that, because it's never been offered to us.
Exactly.
So I don't know it. My point is, they never offered that to us. And we didn't have a relationship with the new carrier, and I know that's important. So I think we've come to the conclusion that it's good to do things a certain way, and we can improve on that. But, you know, when you don't have someone giving you enough information, and you have someone else that's done through a research, you know, you have to look at that. That's all.
I think it completely comes down to how it was handled. Not, not anything against any policy or any, an agent, it was all about how the information was presented to the board and the public. It was...
Well, I think it's been that way, and that doesn't mean it's right.
It's, that's just how it is.
Can you make a comment on that?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Our meetings are on Tuesdays.
Yes.
Every Friday afternoon, I go on board docs and I get my agenda.
Yes.
Every Friday prior to the meeting. And the first thing I do, I read my motions, and then I open the contracts, and I read every single contract.
You do.
I read them start to finish.
Yes.
And that's why I caught the mistake a couple of weeks ago. This is what is in there instead of the contract. There was no contract for me to read. I had a cost comparison. I can't vote with a cost comparison. I don't even know who made the cost comparison. I didn't have any information. That's the problem. The board just wasn't, they could have been the best. They could, they could have been by far the best. But as a board member, I didn't know that.
But you also didn't receive that the last two years either, or the last five years? Because, and I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying...
But the quotes are on there.
The quotes from who?
Burns and Burns were on there. Mrs. Turbo just said she pulled up all of the...
No, no, that's, you mean the previous year. Yeah, but that's the rundown of what the coverage is, that's what I'm saying.
No, but every, every time we have something that Mrs. Foltz has to sign.
Sure.
It's all the way down to the signature line. I see where she is going to sign it. And that wasn't provided to the board this time, at all. I got it from Brush last week.
Some of it, Julie, in July is a perfect storm, because we cut a meeting out in July, you know?
We did. I don't agree with that.
And some of that, you know, is just...
Well, many schools don't have meetings at all in July.
Right. And it was just, you know, generally the meeting in July, you probably really don't ever want to limit our board meetings to one.
Well, I think the, the board always has to make those decisions.
And we made that decision. It's not you.
No, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying anything. And, and I want to make this public statement, because I, I've listened to a lot of stuff, and, and I appreciate, like, Mr. Larson, he's given some little points, and I really like that.
Thank you.
We're about the same age, that's why I'm being thankful.
We're all guys.
But, you know, if anybody's worried about, I really take pride in talking to people, and I can't, I can't necessarily deal with every insurance issue, I don't deal with all that, I can't do everything in this school. But if somebody wants to come in and talk facts, I will do that with anybody in this room. And I'm opening that up, and I know Mr. Latour will do the same. I certainly agree, that there's procedures that we could always get better at, and we do facts, and there's problems. I agree with that. But I open it up to anybody, call me up, we'll set a time up, come on in, you want to talk to me and Josh, Josh will do it as well. We're willing to do that, and I want to open that up to anybody that wants to do it, just to make it fair, because sometimes it's harder to talk in a board situation, you do three minutes, or whatever. And anybody going to run for the board, coming on the board, was on the board, come on in. So I just want to say that, Mrs. Seaman's come on in, I want to meet you, and you can tell me all about first grade, I'll learn more. Please do that, okay? And I'm just offering, that's all, that's all I want to say.
Dr. Matt, if I could just one very quick comment?
Yes, sir.
Everybody on the board, you volunteer, you give your time.